We're going to swap out of A with out of B. We're going to do the East presentation first.
Just gonna let them kind of do their thing on this. But I will say thank y'all for letting me be an employee here and do this program. I truly love this as a job. I think what I do reflects on them. They are some amazing kids and what we got to do this year with conference was nothing short of amazing in my opinion. They are truly, truly what makes this program. And when I boast about them, it's not an exaggeration. They do all the work. It's not me at all. I'm just there behind the scenes making sure they don't kill each other. So that is a hundred percent what it is. So I'm gonna give it over to Kayden and let him take care of this.
Good afternoon, everybody. If y'all don't know me, my name is Kayden Hauser. I've been in East. This is my second year. And today I'm gonna tell you about some of the things that we've done in our East program this year as well as East Conference. First thing I was gonna tell y'all about is all the things that we learned in our program. Some of the main things is technical skills, architectural skills and speaking skills. Some ways that we learn technical skills is through programs like Adobe Audition helps us record things that we need. Photoshop help us make graphics for Facebook page, anything that we really need. As well as architectural skills. Caleb Hillis worked with a program called ArcGIS to help us win an award at East Conference, the Thay Jones Architectural Award. And it was the only one given out this year. We were the winner for his new gym design. We also have the speaking skills where people like me work on our sports podcast. We also have a mental health podcast and I do our sports commentary. We work on stuff like that. We also do a lot of volunteer service. One of the programs we started recently was East of Music where if kids that aren't athletics, if they want to have something to do after school, they can go and learn new instruments. So they have some after-school activity to keep them busy. We also do all of our live streaming by ourselves for all of our sports games this year, basketball, football. We did our first track meet today and we're gonna be doing our track meet next week as well as the weight meet tomorrow. We also, we went to East Conference this year and we were lucky enough to come home with three awards presenting all of the stuff that we've done this year through our hard work. The theme for this year, East Conference, was Uncharted. If y'all seen the movie, it just came out recently. But our idea was a crashed plane and that got home, that took home the best award, best booth award. We worked on that booth for many months and it helped us bring home that award. This is the most awards that our East team has brought home in a few years, I think, ever. Isn't that right? Ever? Yeah. Three awards, that's the most we've got, which is, which is pretty nice. Makes us, in my opinion, one of the best East teams that we have in the state. We also had during conference, our student, we worked together, grew as a team throughout the whole week. We presented all of our projects that we've done to all of those schools, hundreds of schools there. And we showed them all what we've done through our hard work and dedication. And this year also at the England area Chamber of Commerce banquet that was held a few weeks ago, probably around a month ago, we got the Organization of the Year award that was presented to us by the Chamber of Commerce. And then for the first time ever for our East Conference team, our student Charlie Adams was on our, was on the leadership team. A leadership team is the group of people at East Conference, student-led, that helped run the whole organization together. She was on the documentation team, which came together with putting all of these pictures together that really shows what all goes on at the East Conference. She was the first one from our school to ever have this prestigious honor. And she really made us proud by showing what we can do through our East program.
Alright, so yeah, just like Kayden said, we have had a lot of individual growth, but not only that, we've had a lot of group growth and program growth. So here's some of the data that we collected and accumulated over this past year. So we have completed four hundred and forty-five student development lessons. So our kids will go onto the East Road site and pick a lesson that they're interested in and complete the whole thing. And this could take a whole week or just basically teaches them skills that they might need for programs or basically anything that you could use in East. So we completed four hundred and forty-five of those historically out of the years that we've had East. What is it, five? Five years. We've, this is actually fifty-plus, but we're gonna say fifty because we don't know exactly. But we've worked with fifty community partners, which is very good for not being in a big area. So yeah, we've worked with fifty. This year total, we had worked one thousand one hundred and sixty-three volunteer hours. So this is outside of school, anything outside of school hours that our students in our program have worked on. So that's just how much commitment we have to East. And then so for each hour that a community partner spends with us, it's actually worth thirty-one dollars and eighty cents. And this year total, we have saved two thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents based off of working with our community partners, which is accumulating to seventy-four hours. So seventy-four hours have been spent with talking and working and collaborating with all of our community partners. A community partner is somebody who comes in and we work with them. We, if they have a problem, we basically work with them to solve it. Like prime example, one of our biggest ones is Ms. Stephanie White, the mayor of Kyo. She is one of our biggest community partners. She has so many projects going on that we help her with. Some other ones are probably like Arissa Health. They've been working with our mental health podcast and pretty sure they're helping work with Art with Asthma.
Yeah.
Our project called Art with Asthma. We worked with Cavu Aerospace to help, help build our, our booth for conference. It was a plane, if anybody doesn't know. It was very realistic, to say the least. So we worked with Cavu Aerospace to do that and make that happen. But we have a lot of community partners that we've worked with, big major ones that we've basically upgraded for this year. So that's, we've made lots of accomplishments as a program.
Are y'all, y'all need four members?
Oh, no ma'am. We have seventy-something?
We had twelve, twelve for conference. We had ninety students.
We have ninety students in total in our program, but twelve of us went to conference itself.
You have ninety students that's in the East program? Is that right?
Also, next week, we are heading up to the state Capitol where we're gonna talk at a STEM meeting to show off some of the stuff that we've done as well as meet with some legislators.
Hopefully we'll talk to the governor.
We were one of five programs chosen out of East to represent Central Arkansas. And I think there's over twenty-five hundred programs, so we were one of the five chose to go up there and represent East.
We're making big progress. We're making our name.
Y'all are wonderful speakers. That's what's so wonderful. A lot of times, young people are very shy because when I was in school, I had to get up before and speak. And I didn't do as well as y'all did.
We've got lots of practice.
Well, that's wonderful.
Thanks, Jero.
Okay, the next thing is the principal's report. Ms. Dan, you start it up.
Um, we've got a pretty short month for the month of April, which is good because May is so busy for us. So our total enrollment right now is currently at three fifty. On the fifth, second grade took a field trip to Kyo Fish Farm. And I didn't get to go, but the teachers and kids came back and were telling me about it. And it was fascinating. Like, I have got to go next year. I didn't know that they had so much going on at the fish farm. But they were telling me about the different species that they had there, about the birds and which birds would try to eat their fish and which ones were native to the area and which ones they had to use protection against. It was really interesting and the kids really enjoyed it. They've learned so much there. So we're definitely gonna have to go back. On the tenth, sixth grade took a trip to four H. On the twelfth, kindergarten went to the zoo. The fifteenth, we had our teacher work day. We had a faculty meeting, testing training for our teachers. And then they spent the rest of the day working in their classrooms on curriculum and trying to get things closed up for the year. Tonight, the sixteenth, we had a math and science parent night at the elementary school that started at five. And we had a really big turnout. We had more than probably we've had in several years come out. And so that was really great. The twenty-third through the twenty-sixth, we have our Atlas Summit of Assessment coming up for grades three through six. And then I just wanted to brag on our students. For the third nine weeks, we gave out two hundred and fifty Lion Awards and that's for good behavior. And we gave out a hundred and forty-three Pride Awards and that's for perfect behavior. So those are students who don't get a mark on their clipboard or don't have to pull a pocket. And so just our third week's awards assembly, those were given out for good behavior. And so I'm really proud of our students and their behavior at the elementary school. And I included just a picture of the three field trips that they took this month. Any questions for the elementary?
The current number of students enrolled at EHS is two hundred and fifty-seven. We dropped two students who moved to Cabot, one who is now in our homeschool program and one was dropped due to lack of attendance. We are monthly fired our on March twenty-seventh. Track, baseball and softball are still in full swing. We go to the junior high district track meet in England today. Friday, March twenty-ninth, we're close for Good Friday. April second, Jostens came and delivered classrooms and graduation items to juniors and seniors. National Guard came to visit with the students at lunch on April third. April fifth was our quarterly AR field trip to main event. And we had eighty-two students meet their AR goals to be eligible for this trip. So that's a big jump than we had last time. April ninth, Ms. Kelly Wood from Virtual Arkansas, she's a human anatomy teacher for our eleventh graders, came to school and did a lab where they dissected a sheep heart. April eleventh and twelfth, seniors were provided CPR training or awareness and stop-the-bleed training provided by Wilbur Mills Co-op and Ms. Shay Martin. This is a requirement for graduation. So all seniors had to have this in order to graduate. On Friday, April twelfth, we also held our third nine weeks awards assembly for students who earned all As or all As and Bs and discussed upcoming Atlas testing and the crazy carnival. Yesterday, April fifteenth, we held our monthly teacher work day. We met in the library for a quick staff meeting and the teachers were able to work in their classrooms to prepare for Atlas testing. And then today, we began Atlas testing. Students in grades seven through ten took the ELA summative assessment. And we had ninety-two percent of students complete the test today. Tomorrow, they will take the mathematics assessment. Thursday will be the final day with science. And then Friday morning, we'll complete any makeups that are needed. And then Friday afternoon, we have our annual crazy carnival with fun for all of the students and staff. Games and concessions and a dunking booth. If anybody wants to come and get in the dunking booth. Y'all are welcome to come. Or you can come and throw balls. I'm gonna get in it. Y'all can come throw balls. They cost one dollar though because it's expensive to purchase a dunking booth.
Question, did all the seniors get the CPR?
Yes, as far as I know, everyone completed it. There may be one or two that nervous constance is going to train for CPR awareness and stop the bleed.
Any questions? Next item on the agenda is the salary schedule. It is, there are no changes from last year. It's the exact same round. And I'm seeking a motion to approve the salary schedule for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This next one is gonna be presented by Ms. Judy Root. Looking to approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five VI-B dash B Special Education Budget Application.
Six B, yeah. We do this, this is what we do every year. We have to submit this to the state. This will certify our intent to spend our, our state and federal funds on, only on the students that it's provided for, for the ones that have been identified as having disabilities. We, the, we are also certifying that we, we will follow the procedures and rules and regs that are set up by the IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disability Education Act. And that we will follow all of those, those procedures that we're supposed to on a year-to-year basis. So if, and all I'll have to do is get, see, I, but if you'll flash there, Mike, and put your name and sign it there, that will be fine.
Alright, so I'm seeking a motion to approve this budget application.
There will be a part B that Angie and I will have to work on as far as the actual spreadsheets for what it will, the monies will be spent on. But this is just the part A that I have to send with signatures. And the part B will, I have to have signatures. This is just for you. We have to send them. This was the lobbying. And I have to submit all of our names and contact information to the state department. That we don't have to sign anything else.
Next item is to approve the master plan narrative. And have the public hearing on this. The master plan narrative has changed just slightly. The grade configuration, England School District consists of two campuses. The elementary school is kindergarten through sixth grade and the high school consists of grades seven through twelve. Enrollment, the England School District has a current enrollment of six hundred fifteen students. Tenure projection is that the district will maintain an enrollment ranging from six hundred twenty to six hundred thirty students. England is a predominantly a varied community with little industry. Many people who live in England commute a little lot or other surrounding communities to work. Most England residents live in the town of the school system. In January two thousand twenty-two, England School District opened a new elementary school building. The school is expected to continue to have positive effect on enrollment. Life cycle, England School District is currently in the process of rekeying the entire district. Additional fencing will be added to the high school campus to bolster security. A district-wide radio communications network has been purchased and installation is pending. The district plans to continue to upgrade in future projects. District uses Operations Hero for regular maintenance and reporting. Elementary and high school upgrades will be added to the Operations Hero system. Future projects, the old elementary school has been demolished and debris removal is in progress. A small permanent shed is being planned to house new communications equipment. A new gymnasium or upgrades to the current gymnasium are planned. There are no long-range large facility projects planned at this time. The BBI and financial information. The England School District is currently has no facilities with zero or negative BBI percentage. Twenty-two, twenty-three, ASR building fund balance is at one thousand, or one hundred thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and will be used for all locally funded and future partnership projects. The BBI is the Building Value Index and it represents a figure of two percent, uh, two percent depreciation per year. It just has to be included in this. Now, we can open this to comments from the public. I also need a resolution. Board of Directors, the England School District approved and adopted this, the two thousand twenty-four six-year master plan for submittal to the Division of Public School Academic Facilities and Transportation. All board members agreed by vote on April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
We're saying that we approve this master plan. All we're saying is that we're expecting to have a few more students, not a bunch of students, but a few more students.
That's over the next six years. That's what we foresee.
But we don't have any extra plans, we just?
Right now, no. No, not right now. Only what we, this, this year, like, is in the plan, we upgrade radios. We're just waiting on enough dry weather, we can pour some concrete, some rubber, a temporary, a permanent small building that will house our radio equipment, our repeater. It's gonna be under the lechers. It's gonna be fenced in, that new fence that we've got. And we're gonna rekey. And that will probably start even this month or next month.
Is this transportation, is there any fires with transportation that would be affected, is that correct?
No. We will have, we will start looking to replace the buses. Do that every so often, but it's on a rotation. Buses get old and break down a little bit. Alright, the next thing, next item is approve a quote from Renaissance Learning. Renaissance Learning is accelerated reader subscription, Star Math, Star Reading. Use of their platform and other professional services we've used in the past years. This, this is six thousand forty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Now, this next one is a huddle. Huddle is typically used strictly for athletics. But now, there is, they have offered some services that they can use in the classroom to help the teachers. And the, it's called the Athletic Package, but it does a lot of things that were, that can be used in the classroom as, similarly, similarly as coaches view film to work on their game plan. The administrators can use this video to work on things with their teachers. And because it's now, we can now use it in the classroom, we can pay for this with federal funding. So we're looking for, we're looking, instead of paying seven thousand three hundred and ninety-six dollars, we're looking at paying thirteen thousand dollars in the budget. That would be better money. So I'm seeking a motion to approve the purchase of this whole, the athletic package. Next is a quote from Nizzella. And we've used this for years. This is just a re-upping our subscription. Yes, we already had this. We already had it. This, this, they're nearly up, yearly subscription. So.
Surprise the increase.
Uh, I don't know what it was last year. Yeah, I would have to ask William about it because I don't, I don't know the price. But this sounds, this sounds familiar. It's pretty close. And, and the next item is seeking a motion to approve- And, and the next item is seeking a motion to approve payment to Hargra's Network for, he already worked. They did all the work and had fixed the network on the gym. It was next up from the storm and they found it.
This was an insurance claim?
This was an insurance claim. They came in, repaired the trims, loose, uh, socket panels. They re, had rebuilt a lot of the framing as well. And the total on that is thirteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. I am seeking a motion to accept the resignation of Carla Bowden as seventh, eighth grade business teacher and seventh, third, twelfth grade girls assistant basketball and track coach. Mason, say goodbye, Ms. Lewis, all in favor? Alright, and now I am seeking a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Callan Boyett as elementary teacher.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Say goodbye, Ms. Mason, all in favor? Both.